We have three excellent experts who would introduce us into the topic of restraining missile proliferation. This is a huge field to cover with ballistic missiles, cruise missiles, hypersonic missiles, highly capable UAVs adding to the mix with the prospects of new emerging little arms races for the future. We got missile development programs in the number of countries in Europe, Asia, in Middle East, some of them with explicit aim of using these missiles as delivery vehicles for WMD. We've got the United States going official with the INF non-compliance charge against Russia. As we heard in the morning, we got unsuccessful so far attempts to include the Iranian ballistic missile program in the framework of comprehensive agreement. And we got sadly the cases of use of short-range ballistic missiles in Syria and in Ukraine. And we got a challenging task at hand, how to restrain the missile proliferation through identifying the drivers and reducing the attractiveness of acquiring or using these weapons through fielding defenses against them or acquiring retaliatory potential, possibly putting brakes on the transfer of the technology or weapons themselves, probably agreeing on legally binding arms control measures, bilateral or multilateral, possibly working through political arrangements or just concentrating on managing deterrence relationship with countries equipped with missile through confidence building measures. Luckily for us, as I mentioned, we got three excellent experts who would help us to navigate through this very difficult field. So to my right, we got Niklas Schornig, who is a senior research fellow at Peace Research Institute Frankfurt. To my immediate left, WPS C2, senior fellow at Brookings India Center. And to my far left, Sitky Egeli, who is an independent analyst dealing with defense industries and weapons system from Turkey. In a slight change from the program, and I hope everybody would excuse me that, we would actually start with WPS, then we go to Sitky, and we end up with Niklas since Niklas' topic and his focus is somehow different than the two previous speakers. More or less 12 minutes for the initial presentations, and then we would go straight into the Q&amp;A. So, WPS, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you very much Chair, and it's a pleasure to be here and part of this discussion, particularly to present something of a non-European perspective, and I'm grateful, you know, for that opportunity. I must also point out that I was struck by the irony of our venue and the name of the room as Infinity. You know, when you're working on missile issues, it seems like you're really caught in an Infinity loop, you know, that it's something that you've kind of done before and it, you know, keeps coming back again, and it may be a long time before we actually get anywhere. So let me then start by, you know, kind of identifying, and Chair, you've already done this, you know, superbly, but let me just sort of raise some of the issues that poses a challenge for us, right? So, three sets of questions I thought might be useful for us to try and focus on. First, what missiles are we talking about, or should we talk about? Should we only talk about WMD, weapons of mass destruction tipped missiles, or conventional? Should we talk about cruise? Should we talk about ballistic? Should we talk about hypersonic? Should we talk about man pads? What about long range, or intermediate, or short range? Or should we in fact talk about all of them? Second, whose missiles should we be focusing on? Those in the possession of states? And should we look at only the missiles of some states? Or should we look at the missiles of all states? Should we only look at the missiles of those states which are under the scrutiny of the UN Security Council, you know, which is described as, you know, the international community? What about states that have withdrawn from treaties or are threatening to withdraw from treaties? You know, should we look at the US withdrawal from the ABM or the Russian threat to withdraw from the INF? What about those missiles in the possession of non-state actors? You know, and here we have the recent case of MH17, sorry, 17, and, you know, the indication of the use of missiles by non-state actors. And then what issues should we be looking at? Should we be looking at disarmament? So should we be pursuing something like an INF and a proposal on a ban on hypersonic missiles that are being talked about? Or should we talk about arms control, narrowly confined to something like START or the ABM treaty, which is limiting the number of, you know, missiles that you have but not an outright ban? Or should we focus on non-proliferation, which by the way is the topic that we've been given? And in that case, should we focus on vertical proliferation? Or should we also focus on horizontal proliferation? In which case, should we focus on the missile technology control regime and the UN Security Council efforts? Or should we look at something else? And more importantly, and this is a recurring theme which has come up in the conference already, should we deal only with missiles? Or should we, what about other related activities which are linked to missiles? For example, military capabilities in cyberspace, outer space domains, and certainly even WMD capability? How do we address all of this? And of course, the big challenge is, and here I'll quote from a UN study, which basically said that at present, no universally accepted norms or instruments to deal with missile-related concerns exist, right? So what do we do? What we've really seen in practice has been two approaches which have become evident that countries and the international community have followed to address the challenge posed by missiles. The first of these approaches is to, an effort to build military technological defenses against missiles. These would include global theater and area missile defense systems. Almost every country today has had, which has a significant missile program, is also developing or acquiring missile defense capabilities, despite processations to the contrary, even though they actually object to missile defense, they themselves actually have quite significant missile defense programs. In addition, we also, you know, these countries are also thinking about preemptive or preventive military doctrines to approach dealing with missile threats using conventional capabilities, right? Now, some of the countries in a plurilateral setting have also launched quasi-military or military interdiction programs to disrupt the missile supply chain through intelligence sharing and interception of suspected transfers. The obvious example of this plurilateral approach is the Proliferation Security Initiative, PSI. There is a second approach that is also being followed, and this includes what I would broadly call the diplomatic political initiative. And this includes approaches like the global approach, the Hague Code of Conduct, which I'll talk about, the regional approaches in which I would include the ACERS process, the Arms Control and Regional Security Conference in the Middle East, the six-party talks, including, I would actually argue, the three plus three talks, or you might even say the Middle East, you know, WMD weapon-free zone would fall into that category. Bilateral initiatives between US and Russia, between India and Pakistan. Now, all of these initiatives seek to promote responsible missile behavior and restrain tensions that might arise out of missile testing or use. However, they have not really been very successful in restraining missile proliferation so far. And the rest of my focus and time, I will spend on these political diplomatic initiatives, and we can certainly come back later on to the other initiatives as well, but I thought this might be useful for me to focus on. Now, there are several significant top-down and bottom-up political diplomatic initiatives which are worth evaluating, and let me sort of run through them. There are four in my list here. The first is the pre- and post-launch notification system, or the PLNS, of ballistic missile launches between US and the Russian Federation of 2000, and between India and Pakistan of 2005. These are the only two pair of countries which have this kind of an arrangement. Now, unlike the Hague Code of Conduct, which I'll come to in a minute, both of these are legally binding instruments, and they have seen regular reporting by the signatories. Both of them are also relatively successful in their narrow objectives. However, it is worth pointing out that they have not restrained the missile testing program of these countries. Besides, they don't cover cruise missile or missile defense or even hypersonic tests. And they do not even cover all the key global and regional missile players, notably China, which is clearly missing in this grouping. Nonetheless, they are useful confidence building and transparency measures that not only complement other agreements between, for example, the US and Russia, but also between India and Pakistan, but might build on in the future to restrain missile programs. There is a possibility of that. So the question I have for these bottom-up bilateral initiatives is, might there be some benefit to expand these bilateral PLNSs to other missile nations, particularly the P5? What are the prospects of implementing similar PLNSs to other missile-prone areas, particularly the Middle East and Northeast Asia? Might some version of this form a part of the Middle East WMD Free Zone Conference? Could that be one area to look at? And I pose this really as a question for us to discuss later on. Second is the Hague Code of Conduct, that I think most of us here know quite well. This was launched, of course, in 2002 with 96 signatories. Today, it has 137 members. It is a non-legally binding international framework to regulate ballistic missile proliferation. It has now got five UNGA resolutions which are supporting it, and the last one in 2013 was supported by 162 states. Now, the HECOCC subscribing states commit to exercise minimum possible restraint in the development, testing, and deployment of ballistic missiles, and also to implement transparency measures such as pre-launch notification and annual declarations. However, in reality, the average rate of the on-time submission of annual declarations remains very low. It's just at about 50%. Second, HECOCC also suffers from what I might call the one-size-fits-all approach, that, you know, this is one that you're going to try and apply to every region and every country in different parts of the region, not including, not keeping in mind that regional dynamics in these parts may actually be quite distinct. Moreover, key countries including China, India, Iran, Israel, Pakistan, Saudi Arabia, and North Korea are not even part of this. This then raises the question really of, do you really want to have an HECOCC which is universal but still misses out on all the key countries, missile-capable countries? Or should we actually try to move towards effective implementation? Now, here again, I pose this as a question, it is worth noting that while the HECOCC is more multilateral in its character and moving towards universality, it is an interesting contrast to the selective plurilateralism of the missile technology control regime. And this, the question I pose is, would this selective enlargement of the MTCR, if not its universalization, actually strengthen the HECOCC or weaken it? And that may be something, you know, for us to discuss and consider later on. The third set of initiatives are a series of UN Security Council and UN General Assembly resolutions passed to constrain missile proliferation. However, if you look at the UN Security Council operations, it has only been successful in one case, and that's the case of Iraq. This was enforced through UNSCOM and ANMOC, and it was successful in reversing the proliferation of missiles in the country under very exceptional circumstances, and one would argue, at a very high cost. Now, the same cannot be said as of now in the context of DPRK or Iran, even though both these countries remain under Chapter 7 resolutions. Now, in contrast, the UN General Assembly established three groups of governmental expert panels on missiles, and this, interesting, was initiated by an Iranian General Assembly resolution, not to examine threats by specific missile programs, but the issue of missiles in general. And I was part of this, and I'd be happy to talk about this in more detail, but here I really want to stress that these initiatives, although perhaps the smallest of all of the initiatives in terms of numbers, there were only about 23 countries involved, were perhaps the most representative because it involved all the key missile powers. And some of the ideas that came up there were, you know, were very minimalist, but these were really ideas decided between a group of countries like Israel and Iran, sitting in the same room, with the United States and China, and India and Pakistan. So a very interesting grouping. Let me then move to the very last sort of set of initiatives which deals with non-state actors. And here in particular, it is, I'm talking about UN Security Council Resolution 1540, which by all accounts is a partial success story to address non-state actors' missile proliferation. However, the implementation of 1540 still remains uneven and far from complete. Apart from the lack of capacity of some states to actually implement the 1540 nationally, other states have actually deliberately misreported their WMD holdings and steps taken to prevent WMD falling into the hand of non-state actors. A classic example of this, which actually was, you know, came to light recently, is that of Syria. In its 1540 declaration, Syria categorically denied possessing any WMD, including chemical weapons. Thus, states could get away with false reporting, given the voluntary nature of these declarations, and the inability of the 1540 Committee to actually independently verify them. However, a very recent resolution, 2118, on Syria actually, which is a Chapter 7 resolution, actually now mandates all UN members, and I quote, "to inform immediately the Security Council of any violations of 1540," thus empowering the Committee to verify all reports. And this is a really major empowerment of the Committee. It remains to be seen how the Committee will actually be able to implement it or not. So let me then start trying to conclude, Mr. Chair, by sort of saying, what do I see as the way forward? Well, first of all, we're not likely to see a comprehensive, universal, legally binding framework to restrain missile proliferation in the new future. Not in my time, not in my lifetime, and certainly not in the lifetime of even the youngest person attending this conference, okay? So, second, in the absence of a universally accepted framework, it is also evident that no single approach, particularly outside the UN, is likely to succeed. Third, what we're really likely to see is a set of ad hoc initiatives, some within the UN, many of them outside the UN, some multilateral, some plurilateral, both initiatives driven by institutions and others non-institutional initiatives to try and address missile threats. But let me end on a slightly optimistic note, which is to say that one area of broad consensus that might be ripe for further progress is transparency and some confidence in security building measures related to missiles. Now, some progress on CBMs is realistically, that can be hoped for, whether on the bilateral, regional, or the multilateral scale. Now, this is of specific significance to global and regional security alike, since by virtue of its inherent characteristics of speed and penetration capability, missiles are especially suited to surprise use irrespective of whether associated use doctrines are couched in terms of defense, offense, deterrence, or coercion. And as such, missiles are really confidence busters per excellence. Now, some of the CBMs that we might want to consider, and I throw this out for your consideration, are greater transparency, such as through a UN-based missile registry indicating missile types and perhaps inventory. Second, pre-flight notification of missiles and perhaps satellite launch vehicles. And third, de-alerting of missile forces to prevent accidental or early launch. Now, in all of these, for all of the institutions and areas that I've talked about, even though a lot of criticism has been leveled against the HECOCC, I think CBMs is actually an area of strength for the HECOCC. And this is one area that the HECOCC might want to develop, but moving beyond its one-size-fits-all approach to try and tailor it to different regions and different countries and try and see whether CBMs may be one way to go forward. It's not a very optimistic scenario in terms of restraining missile proliferation, but at least that might be a start. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for bringing order into the political diplomatic part of the puzzle, and not only coming with additional set of questions, but also crucially offering some answers and some proposals that I'm sure will be picked up during the debate. Now I turn to Sitky, and I hope that you would also talk a little bit about the military part of the problem, why the countries might be interested in acquiring this kind of technology.
Thank you. Is this working? Okay. First of all, thanks a lot for this wonderful presentation, which made my job even more challenging and difficult to keep up with the performance. To tell the truth, to try to package such a diverse topic in 10 minutes and to make an introductory set of remarks is not very easy. What I will do instead is to present you with a, like a menu, from which you can pick up the ones you like or you would like to find out more, and we can discuss during the question-answer session, because each one of the topics would be a session by itself, actually. So, instead of going to the usual suspects of the missile proliferation, which a lot of you have been hearing about the last 20 years at least, it is part of this Infinity discussion, I mean, countries like Iran or North Korea, or, I mean, Syria or Iraq, I will try to identify some of the challenges or some of the new patterns, trends that we may be observing for the period ahead, and try to formulate some approaches, some proper ways to first understand them or identify them, and then try to engage and find ways to handle those, if there are such ways, of course. Now, if you look at it, the last 10 years at least, like, there have been some positive developments. Iraq is out of the picture, one of the prime suspects, and Syria still has ballistic missiles, but with the chemical ingredient taken out, it is not a very credible weapons of mass destruction threat because its ballistic missiles are confined to a status of more or less tactical weapons now. Libya is more or less out, although they may have some residual capabilities remaining in that country. Then, I mean miraculously, you have the ballistic missile technologies maturing in the last 10 years whereby we are not defenseless against ballistic missiles. I mean, even if a renegade state happens to launch a few, we have means to stop them. So I mean, at least Europe or the United States and its allies could be feeling a little bit more secure because a lot of those defenses are deployed on ships. So wherever there is a threat on the globe, some of those Aegis cruisers could be deployed and could come to the help of the good friends of the United States or NATO, at least. On the other hand, when you look at it, I mean, there have been some developments, like right at the heart of Europe. You have the Russian Federation, which has started deploying its so-called Iskander missiles last year, mid-last year, which is a ballistic missile, could be nuclear or conventionally armed. It's not going behind the confines of INF, but nonetheless, it's a new capability, a new ballistic missile capability which is being introduced in Europe. And more alarmingly, if you look at the Russians, the way they treat their so-called tactical ballistic missiles, they don't see them any different from aircraft or other weapons. They have used them at great ease during their conflicts with Georgia, for example. So the firing of ballistic missiles is not the kind of psychological barrier that we see elsewhere in the world, doesn't seem to exist for Russians. This is, this is an important difference from what we have been seeing elsewhere in the world. Then, on top of that, what the United States has raised an alarm bell recently is this R-500 cruise missile, although cruise missiles is not part of the confines of the session that we have been given, it could launch cruise missiles, and some people claim the range is up to 2,500 kilometers, and it is conventionally armed or could be nuclear armed. All of a sudden, this INF treaty violation issues are coming up because this R-500 cruise missile happens to use the exact same launcher that Iskander ballistic missiles are using. It's one launcher, one command control system which could fire either a ballistic missile or a long-range cruise missile. Then on top of that, you have this famous, another US objection to Russian ambitions recently is this RS-26, which is, as the Russians call it, it's a light ICBM, or the Americans call it as a intermediate-range ballistic missile, which is in violation of the INF. So what this implies, all of a sudden, whereas the Europe thought this ballistic missile was an out-of-area, I'm using the NATO terminology, out-of-area threat for the last 15, 20 years, is making its way back into the European security calculations all of a sudden. So this is one trend that we may be observing in the next 10, 15, 20 years to come. So this is one observation you can put aside. Now, related with that, related with that, actually, when you look at this RS-26, the new light ICBM of Russian Federation, it is not only the range, it is also, it is a maneuvering warhead ballistic missile which is aimed at deceiving the defensive measures. So it is supposedly a missile under development to overcome the defensive aids capabilities that NATO and the United States especially have been developing the last 20 years and spent, by one estimate, 300 billion US dollars already. Now, this is bringing in a new equation, the sort of silence you see also on the Iranian program and also the Chinese developments recently. Those countries are investing very heavily in new capabilities to make their missiles more survivable, more accurate, and also capable of evading defensive measures. And there is very active things going behind the scenes because it is not like the missile itself, which is very visible. When you test a new missile, everybody sees about it, and everybody can make analysis about what it is and what are the implications, whereas when you have those behind-the-scenes decoys and some maneuvering warheads, those are confined in secrecy, and very few public information is available on such things. So it is, perhaps we are right at the eye of the storm. I mean, things are coming for the next five to 10 years. This is another important observation, the second one that you should put aside. Then comes some developments, like Turkey, all of a sudden, the rabbit coming out of the hat, and the last two years making, or, I mean, suggestions, the rhetoric of Turkish top decision-making is an interest in ballistic missiles, and the ones in the 2,500-kilometer range. It's a NATO ally. It's a European country, at least in theory, not recently perhaps, but... Why? I mean, a country which has protection of NATO, which has US nuclear weapons deployed on its soil as part of an extended deterrence, why in the hell a country like that would develop an interest in ballistic missiles? And what will be the implications of that on other countries in Turkey surrounding? Okay, this is, I mean, I'm putting, this is part of the menu, I'm not going to elaborate that any further. Then Saudi Arabia, all of a sudden, we are learning, back in 2007, purchased some very sophisticated medium-range ballistic missiles from People's Republic of China with the consent of the United States. And the United States actually even sent experts to make sure those were not nuclear-capable, what it does with full information and consent of Washington, that a country like Saudi Arabia could buy medium-range ballistic missiles from China. What about MTCR? What about all the pressure you have been putting on Iran and other countries for developing similar capabilities? This is, and then more recently, for example, we have other rabbits coming out of the head, like South Korea, having tested a 500-kilometer ballistic missile, I mean, this year, which has ultimately an 800-kilometer range, again with the consent, with the approval of the United States, an unwritten agreement between the two countries people are referring to. And Azerbaijan, I've been reading only 10 days ago, is trying to buy medium- is trying to buy medium-range missiles from Pakistan now. I mean, you have new players, new people coming on board. And what's going on here? That means the ballistic missiles may have some sort of an attraction behind the weapons-of-mass-destruction linkage here. Now, this is the second part, and I will try to round it up to finish afterwards. I know Lucas is very conscious of the time. Here, I mean, you have a number of developments. The last 10, 15 years, when you are looking, the microelectronics, semiconductors and all that, the guidance technologies, GPS or GLANOS and things like that, and very rapid advances in material sciences, those exotic composite materials and all that, are actually rendering ballistic missiles a lot more reliable and cost-efficient than they were 10 or 15 years ago. Like, I'm going to give you a comparison. The Israelis have been marketing very actively in each and every arms fair the last two years, a new missile, they used to call Laura, but now they call it Predator Hawk. It's a missile sold, it's beyond or below the MTCR threshold of 300 kilometers, 285, to be exact, okay? It's a missile which is half the length of a SCOT, that we all know from 40, 30 years ago, and it's 150 weight, but it has more or less the same range. And whereas the accuracy of a SCOT was up to 1 kilometer, this one has a circular probable of 10 meters. And it carries a fragmentation warhead or a penetrating warhead to hit the buried targets, which make it a lot more potent than a unitary warhead that you will find on a SCOT. And it comes, probably, 1/10 the price of a SCOT. So militarily, it's a useful weapon. Why not buy it? Who cares about, I mean, the MTCR or all kind of noise the countries are making about deploying or using ballistic missiles? And Russia has been marketing its so-called Iskandar E, which is E for export. You have, the Israelis very actively marketing. To our knowledge, no countries have bought those so far. But the last two, three years, in every major defense exhibit you go, those are on display, with brochures and everything, you can buy them. Now, all of a sudden, you realize the ballistic missiles are more accurate, they are more reliable, because they are using solid fuel and all that. They are much smaller, which means they are easy to move around and to conceal and to protect from a first strike. And they are more effective, they have more lethality, they bring more punch, and they are cheaper. So this is a challenge we have to deal with. We should, this is something we should be aware of for the period ahead. And bear in mind that the exact same technologies are available for longer-range and more potent missiles. It doesn't mean they will be used only for those so-called tactical missiles, which is less than 300 kilometers. There is no obstacle or barrier to use the same technologies for longer-range missiles. So you can only guess what kind of improvements are in the horizon for longer-range missiles that countries like India or Pakistan or Korea or Turkey will be deploying during the years ahead. So very rapidly, it seems, we are being left behind the rapid pace of technology and its spread into the realm of missiles. Now, to conclude, I'm going to draw your attention to a few other topics only. The linkage of ballistic missiles with anti-satellite weapons. So far, United States and China. But basically, an anti-satellite weapon is a ballistic missile. So what linkage is being established there? The second one is hypersonic vehicles, that Lucas has referred to. Hypersonic vehicles are basically either glide weapons or scramjet air vehicles, which are lifted up to space by a ballistic missile, then makes all kind of crazy moves the rest of its flight, whereby you cannot predict where it is going to land. And since it is traveling very fast, and it is maneuvering very fast, you cannot readily develop defensive measures. So this is the second linkage with ballistic missiles for the period ahead. And to my knowledge, there are at least six, seven countries which are experimenting with that technology right now. Then, there is this renewed interest in a new generation of ballistic missiles, which I've just referred to, tactical or a little bit beyond the tactical in terms of range, but accuracy and all that, so they are militarily useful, okay? And what kind of pressure those things are going to bring on existing disarmament or arms control arrangements such as INF, which we are just started seeing right now. So there's a big pressure in the horizon coming on INF and probably other arms control arrangements elsewhere in the world. And I think the last one is the impact of all those developments on ballistic missile defenses. Because you remember, we said we are good news about the ballistic missile defenses, and I mean, we are now capable of stopping those incoming missiles for how long? With all those developments forming. And what kind of a new vicious cycle of offenses and defenses are we initiating from a European perspective, since this event carries the name of European Union? How much of scarce resources allocated to defense will have to be directed or channeled in the direction of missile defenses? The fact that you develop and spend on missile defenses right now, is it good enough? Or every two, three, five years, a new cycle of weapon, counterweapon or counterdefenses develop whereby you keep spending and spending for the next 50 years? So I think this is enough of a menu. I'm going to stop here, and we can address later on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we'll come back to some of the issues. You certainly convinced me that I should buy myself one of these missiles. And I wonder, I wonder why we have so little of missile proliferation so far. Maybe this is already good news, taking the rather scary picture that you painted. And to complicate the issues further, now, we go to Niklas, and we are introducing the UAVs that continue to pop up at many strange places.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, dear colleagues, dear organizers. Thanks for having me here on this panel amongst this distinguished groups of non-proliferation experts. I feel kind of relieved after listening to those presentations, because I thought I'm the odd man out, but now I feel like I'm the odd man in the debate, because some issues are similar to the realm of UAVs I'm going to talk about. However, it is interesting that even today, at this non-proliferation conference, there's no panel focusing on drones in particular or unmanned military systems in general. So they had to put me on this missile panel here. Some might argue that when it comes to non-proliferation, the most pressing issue regarding UAVs is that they could be used like missiles, as delivery vehicles for WMDs. However, I will argue that UAVs and UAV proliferation are problematic beyond their potential as WMD carriers. Even more, UAVs deserve a particular focus as they are only the frontrunner of a more profound trend, namely, the robotization of military arsenals of all military branches. Many problems connected to UAVs, especially armed UAVs, will be relevant for unmanned ground and unmanned naval systems in the near rather than the distant future as well. But given the tight timeframe, I will try to limit my focus on UAVs. As you all know, the most common UAVs are tactical systems with a limited operational range of 300 kilometers or less, several hours of endurance, and a limited payload for tactical intelligence, surveillance, and reconnaissance. In the strategic category, we do have heavier drones of the male, medium-altitude-long endurance or HAL, high-altitude-long endurance class, staying aloft 24 hours and more, with ranges of more than 1,000 miles and ceilings of 50,000 feet or more. Male and HAL systems, as you all know, are usually capable of carrying heavy loads, and some systems have already been armed. Just one example, the US MQ-9 Reaper can carry an ordnance of up to 3,750 pounds in variable configuration, more than 1,000 miles. However, given the recent trend towards small diameter bombs and missiles, it is likely that we will see armed tactical drones in the near future as well, with potential tremendous impact on international security. You say UCAF's unmanned combat aerial vehicles' ability to loiter and pair real-time intelligence with the capability of attack reduces the sensor-to-shooter gap to a minimum and gives them a unique strategic value compared to simple missiles or even manned platforms. They are perfectly suited to attack what the military calls high-value targets out of the proverbial blue sky, with high precision and without sending troops in harm's way. Many critics fear that the availability of those systems will lower the threshold of political and military decision-makers to engage militarily, especially in regions where tensions are already high. Drones have, and I think you know that as well, have tremendously proliferated over the last couple of years. In 2013, the CIA was said to count 87 countries possessing military drone systems, and the proliferation trend is unlikely to stop. The aerospace consultancy Thiel Group concludes in their most recent market studies that UAVs, and I quote from their July 17th press release, "continue as the most dynamic growth sector of the world aerospace industry this decade", quote, "with the market, quote, 'totaling almost 91 billion in the next 10 years'", end of quote. However, in all fairness, most of the drones in military arsenals today are tactical unmanned reconnaissance systems. Depending on the source, 10 to 20 countries are currently said to possess armed drones or drones that have at least the potential to be armed. But the number is likely to go up in the near future given the developments of small diameter munitions described above. When it comes to arms control, there are, of course, relevant regimes, including the CFE Treaty, the MTCR, and WASNA arrangement. And UAVs are covered by the EU's community regime for the control of export, transfers, broking, and transit of dual-use items. I won't go into details here, as I assume that most of you are more familiar with the details than I am. Those regimes do have some respect, some effect. General Atomics, for example, manufacturer of the Predator and Reaper, has reacted to American export restrictions with the Predator XP, an export version of the original Predator, applying to the MTCR, category one, or it's designed not to fall into category one. However, not all current and future drone manufacturers are members of those regimes mentioned, and the knowledge and technology to arm drones is out there already. According to James International Defense Review, countries like, for example, China, Pakistan, or the United Arab Emirates are already developing or producing male or HAL systems with armament options for domestic use, but probably with the growing world market in mind as well. Looking at Europe, James International Defense Review concludes, and rightly so, I would say, that the major defense, and I quote, "the major defense companies in Europe, Russia, and elsewhere simply missed the boat", end of quote. While mid-tier business has developed some capable drones for technical reconnaissance purposes, the huge system houses have missed the development of a reliable male drone with arming capability usable in theaters like Afghanistan. Right now, the European defense industry tries to jump on the bandwagon it had missed by focusing on the next generation of UCAFs, like, for example, the French Neuron or British Taranis. In addition, seven states, including Germany, signed a letter of intent recently, tasking the EDA to develop a concept for a European drone, but have not published any system requirements yet, except that it should be a male drone with arming capability. It will be very interesting to see what those countries want the drone to be capable of. Current UAVs like the Predator, Reaper, or Heron are remotely controlled. They are rather slow, 200 to 300 miles per hour at best, rendering them easy prey for modern anti-aircraft systems. Those drones are suited for uncontested airspace and asymmetric scenarios only, severely limiting their capability as a reliable delivery vehicle for WMD or as strategic weapons against capable opponents in potential interstate conflicts. Demonstrators already flying like Neuron, Taranis, or the American X-47B indicate that the next generation of UCAFs will probably be fast, stealthy, at least to some degree, and agile, and therefore optimized for contested rather than uncontested airspace, making them useful for the full spectrum of military engagements from asymmetric to interstate. This, however, poses a tremendous problem. The grade of autonomy of the next generation is very likely to be much more than today in order to exploit the drone's capability and avoid problems like the latency of this satellite signal or the dangers of a loss of control to jamming or spoofing. To hand over responsibility from the operator to the system seems a logical step from a military perspective to survive in contested conditions. In addition, those capable drones would way be better suited to serve as WMD carriers than the current generation. Last year, several critical NGOs started a campaign against lethal autonomy in military robots, convincing nation-states to debate the issue in informal CCW meeting of experts in Geneva this May. Many delegates and experts agreed that there should be, quote, "meaningful human control", end of quote, when it comes to the decision to use lethal force. However, it is still unclear what meaningful human control, however we define the term, can be guaranteed if highly autonomous systems are to survive in contested airspace, where decisions have to be made in fractions of seconds. The debate will continue in November in Geneva. If my prediction is correct, that the next generation of drones will be optimized for contested airspace, they will be highly autonomous, pushing us closer to lethal autonomy. In addition, high levels of autonomy, short of lethal autonomy, will pose tremendous problems for arms control, especially verification. In the end, the question whether a system has lethal autonomous capability is a matter of software code rather than physical design. And in the panel on Cyberwar, we just debated the difficulties of verification when it comes to software code. So I conclude, Europe would be well-suited to be a non-entrepreneur when it comes to prohibiting lethal autonomy. Should Europe, or at least some European countries, on the other hand, push for more capable drones, this would be, in my perspective, a step in the wrong direction. Let me finish by saying that the danger of lethal autonomy is of course not limited to drones, but concerns all kinds of military robots and autonomous systems. So from a peace researcher's perspective, which I am, the arms control community should be ready to address the pressing concerns connected with the wider trend of the robotization and automation of the military. UAVs and drones are just the most visible thing we can, we have at the moment, but the whole issue we debate about drones, as I said at the beginning, will hound us with other systems as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You are definitely in the right panel. Let's put it like this. And I was wondering to what extent can we or should we adopt or extend the framework and the instruments that we use with regards to ballistic missiles, cruise missiles, to this new and exciting slash scary area? So after these three introductions, it's time for the Q and A session. Please start by introducing yourself. Just wait for the mic.
Hello. Hello, so Jeremiah Midi from the European External Action Service. First, thank you for the level of the presentation and for introducing the UAV. You are too much, put it out of the question when it comes to WMD means of delivery. First, my first comment would be to Mr. Igali on why countries are still acquiring some ballistic missiles, why it's still so seducing. And you tackled, I think, the right question. We were used to point fingers on usual suspects. And now, what is happening? Turkey, South Korea acquired ballistic missile, why? I think they got tired of further the military imbalance. That's what they argue in the parliament. But then, they also noted that it's a power of the diplomatic channel and that having ballistic missiles threatening with ballistic missile is a dialogue. and that having ballistic missiles threatening with ballistic missile is a dialogue, and both Turkey and South Korea got tired with the dialogue in Iran and in South Korea and want to have a word in this conversation. That’s why I think they developed that, and their MTCR kind of failed of deter them to have this technology. My second comment is to Mr. Sidhu, yes, for the HCOC, turning to the HCOC, yes, the country notification are fifty percent, but we can see also the other side. We are close to one hundred percent notification of the PLN inside the HCOC, which is a great achievement of the HCOC with the Russia and the United States coming back in the system. And my last thing is a question to you. You mentioned that probably in our lifetime we won’t see any ballistic NPT or any global treaty, so how about the idea of having a specific initiative? In specific, I mean either regional, so we could take the example of the WMD free zone and calculate them to have ballistic missile-free zones, or given category of missiles, ground-to-ground, a range, a payload. What about this idea? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Annika Tuhunbor from the Swedish MFA. My question is very short. Thank you very much for very interesting presentations filled with facts. You touched upon possible solutions, but I would like you, all three of you, to develop that thinking a little bit more. What solutions? What do you want the international community or regional arrangements to do? What are the next steps to address these developments and these concerns? Thank you.
Thank you. Pavel?
Thank you, Pavel Podvich, Russian Eagle Forces Project. One, just a point of clarification about the Russian RS-26. I don’t think it has anything maneuverable on it, so it’s just a plain ballistic missile with a plain warhead, although it did, it was marketed as a kind of a missile defence penetration vehicle. On the drones, I have a question that is somewhat related to this whole Russia and INF discussion, which is, you probably know that in response to the US allegations of violation, Russia put forward its own list of concerns about the INF treaty, and one of those is that drones actually do meet the INF definition of a cruise missile, and if you look at the definition, the drones, armed drones, do meet that definition. I’m wondering if you’ve looked into that issue, and if you have, sort of, what was your conclusion, and what’s the justification for drones being compatible or not compatible with INF? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We’ll finish the first set of questions here. WPS, would you start?
Yeah, sure. Happy to. Okay. Thank you. Let’s, let me start with the HCOC question. I think, I think that’s absolutely right. I think, you know, by setting up a set of countries to be part of the discussion, it’s a very useful step forward. But I guess, you know, I’m perhaps slightly more ambitious about the HCOC, and that’s why I feel more strongly about, you know, its sort of mispotential. You’re absolutely right, there’s hundred percent reporting on the pre-test notification, but that’s because there are only two countries reporting, in effect, right? And those two countries were reporting anyway. You know, they were reporting kind of before, you know, HCOC, but they came into HCOC. Now, actually, that’s not such a bad thing. If HCOC actually wants to improve those numbers, then to have India and Pakistan, for example, which have a similar arrangement, report as part of that arrangement in HCOC, I think, would improve HCOC numbers as well. So I think that may be one way to think about, you know, looking at other regional approaches, and this comes to your second question, you know. I think one of the challenges with HCOC is that it really is a one-size-fits-all at the moment, whereas we know that different regional dynamics call for different kind of instruments, you know, so perhaps, and I don’t, I’m quite, not quite sure how you can have a flexible regimen within the HCOC specific to some regions, but there may be a possibility. And if that, you know, and I think that would be the next big, big sort of challenge to go forward. Now, you mentioned, you know, what might be specific initiatives, whether there can be BMD zones, et cetera. I’d probably say, you know, I think, and I’ve done a paper on this, but if you look at, you know, sort of the Middle East, for example, certainly as part of AKERS, there was an effort to go down this direction. This could be one initiative down, you know, as part of the WMD free zone for the Middle East, ditto for Northeast Asia. Where could one go with this? I would actually say you probably want to start small, as HCOC has done, to focus on CBMs in the first instance. So, you know, to enhance, improve, you know, pre-flight notification. And even there, by the way, you know, countries like North Korea are very suspicious about that, because their take is that, look, if we notify you when we’re going to test, you’re going to attack us and make sure that that missile is a failure. So, you know, already there’s a certain degree of overlap even there that needs to be, needs to be taken care of, but there is a potential. On the other hand, I think, you know, what other initiatives can we take? There was a talk of global INF a long time ago, that I think is gone. You know, that’s certainly not a possibility very much, but the other thing, I think, maybe what the HCOC can do is look at other regional areas where this has worked and see how that might be included more into, you know, into the HCOC as it evolves, you know, so I think that’s, that’s one area. Annika, your, your set of questions on, you know, what are the solutions, what are the next steps, right? Let me back up a little bit, you know, and say, it’s very interesting. The last time where you had a tremendous amount of initiative, diplomatic and political initiative, actually came when, for two factors. One was when the United States was threatening to pull out of the ABM, and it was launching its BMD program or Missile Defence Program as it’s called. You actually saw three initiatives, one of which was HCOC. The second, which I haven’t mentioned, and, you know, Alex is here and maybe he can talk a little bit about that, is a Russian initiative called the Global Control System. They held two meetings and then it disappeared. And the third one, of course, you know, was the sort of set of, the UN panel, you know, which was also set up around the same time. Now, all of these three were very serious diplomatic efforts, I think, to prevent the US pulling out of the ABM treaty, right? But once that happened, these initiatives also took on a different trajectory, right? So, the Russians dropped the GCS system, you know, approach altogether. HCOC was the only one which carried on, and, you know, missile panel, there was a gap as well. I think we’re at a similar opportunity now. You know, the Russian reconsidering of the INF is really an opportunity again to try and reengage and say, and see what are the kind of diplomatic initiatives that you might want to take forward, right? And some of them, again, you know, there have been ideas thrown out there which may be worth exploring. One of them is on the, on the, on the hyper-velocity, you know, sort of systems, whether those should be banned entirely or not, or whether there should be some other way of looking at it as well. So I think there are certainly, you know, possibilities and initiatives worth exploring. The other one I might put forward there, and, you know, is that in the past, the HCOC came to the UN later, you know, so it was developed outside and then came, came into the UN later. One of the initiatives which have taken place within the UN is this missile panel, you know, the GGE on missile panels, but that was initiated by Iran. Why is it that other countries have not initiated similar approaches within the UN? And that may be something to explore. Now, you know, it may not come to anything, but I think keeping that conversation going is going to be of concern. But let me try and address it more specifically. I think more specifically, one possible area where we can think of doing more is CBMs. There is a history, there is a tradition of that, it’s not very much, but it’s a start.
Thank you. Sidki, if I may push you a little on the Turkish case and the rationale behind developing the missiles, and how can this rationale be influenced from outside or maybe from inside, in addition to answering the questions of what to do next?
Okay, I will try, because I’m not fully convinced it’s a right decision or right policy, what is being followed right now. But anyhow, you are absolutely right. I mean, the military decisions and the procurement or armament decisions are or should be based on political perceptions, threat perceptions, and the consequent action to neutralize the kind of threat that you perceive. So like in the case of Korea, if you look at it, I don’t think it is only in the context of North Korean threat. If you look at the range of the missiles they develop, not ballistic, but they also have a parallel cruise missile development, which is going to fifteen hundred kilometers, if I’m not wrong, you are clearly reaching China, Japan, and some other surrounding countries, not not only North Korea. So there should be some kind of a threat perception or prestige factor, you call it, at least some token capability at a corner that those South Korean leadership are paying attention to. Now, in the case of Turkey, that’s interesting, because Turkey has had a ballistic missile program since late eighties, believe it or not. With the Iran-Iraq war and the CTs war, with Scuds being launched on both sides, there was a interest, at least, like those missiles are right across the border. I mean, what if they target us at certain point in time? Well, probably doesn’t make sense to develop similar capabilities, asymmetrical response with air power and all that makes sense, but in the meantime, we should not be staying totally away from that technology, because God knows what’s going to happen five, ten, or fifteen years from now on. So there was some low-scale investment and some deals with the Chinese in the late nineties to transfer the technology. So Turkey does deploy at the moment ballistic missiles to a range of hundred fifty kilometers, which is, could be considered as a long-range artillery rocket, if you, if you. But there is some capability, some industrial capability, some know-how. As a NATO ally, Turkey has that. And by the way, United States has been selling the so-called ATACAM missiles, which has the same range bracket, to several of the allies. Greece does it, Turkey does have it. I mean, we purchased those things from, from United States in the nineteen nineties anyway, and I believe Finland is trying to buy those, or they find it expensive and they are negotiating with the Russians for Iskander right now, what we are reading in the press, at least. So there has been a residual capability, a legacy program coming up, but what has flared this up? I mean, made a quantum leap, if you want to, in terms of range, from hundred fifty to two thousand five hundred, this is quite a leap forward. We started seeing that right after United States deployed its so-called ballistic missile defence radar in Turkey’s east, and Iran all of a sudden started threatening Turkey with missile strikes. And they said, we are going to hit not only this radar, entire Turkey, blah, blah, I mean, this is an open threat to Turkey. Then the Russians started coming with the same threats against Turkey. Turkey is in our, has been included in the, in the target list of our missiles from now on. They never elaborated what missiles, if those are ICBMs or shorter-range missiles, but all of a sudden, I mean, the Turkish leadership, I mean, just imagine yourself being a politician in that seat, and you are getting threats from some of the neighboring countries, you ask your military, okay, what do we have to counter those? Nothing. Why? I mean, why, why in the hell we haven’t developed this capability in the past? So I give you the instruction to follow this up. And when you combine that with the general attitude of the Turkish top leadership, which I see it as a little bit coercive, a little bit assertive, perhaps I will stop short of saying hegemonic or imperial in their attitudes or rhetoric at least, it makes perfect sense to be able to say, I have my own capabilities. This is good in international arena, in their perception, this is an epistemological thing, probably. I would not necessarily agree with that. In my opinion, it makes no sense. And also, at a political level, at the domestic politics, such messages fly very high and very nicely. We develop our missiles, we have our fighter aircraft, we have our satellite in space, and, and we have our long-range missiles, which was, by the way, only two weeks ago or ten days ago, our prime minister, when becoming president, in his farewell speech, he said, we are developing long-range missiles and we will develop even longer-range ones. Why in the hell this came in your, in your farewell speech? Because it resonates well with the public, with the crowds. So, I mean, hmm? Anyhow, so, I mean, I, I think this is rounding up. I mean, in a lot of countries’ perception, it’s not necessarily hundred percent military, but it’s also the symbolic and the political value of such things. Now, coming to your question about what is the solution? Well, I mean, this is, this is one million dollar question, probably. It’s not easy, but for one thing, so far, we have always concentrated on like MTCR, the kind of restrictions on export or trading of missile components and technologies. I think this should be kept on still, because if nothing else, it is increasing the threshold of developing or deploying such capabilities, price-wise and politically. But on top of that, you should also accept the fact that there will be countries getting this capability. Then, at that stage, you have to start concentrating on more creative things like some of the confidence-building measures, some transparency things, some pre-launch or notification processes. I think we should be spending more time on those capabilities from now on, not only restricting or trying to stop the trading of it, because a lot of the countries, let’s be honest, Korea or Turkey, are beyond the threshold whereby you can stop their activities by restricting imports or exports to those countries. They simply don’t need a lot of the things that you are restricting to begin with. And the remark about RS-26, thank you, I mean, this is on the basis of what we read, there are lots of things in the international press. What I drew this conclusion, in 2010, if I’m not mistaken, Putin said, let United States deploy the ballistic missile in Eastern Europe, we have the capability under development to neutralize that all. And around the same time, we started reading things about RS-26, and like myself, a lot of the observers, let’s say, jumped on the conclusion that this is probably one of the capabilities built in, probably it’s built in in something else, some of the more conventional ICBMs, but there was this parallel the last four years between new missiles and the rhetoric or reality that Russia is developing capabilities to evade defences. I think this is the first round.
Thank you. Now, to Niklas, the specific questions, are some UAVs, cruise missiles, or not?
I will start with the easier one, with the solutions, which sounds odd, but talking about the issue is already part of the solution. A few years ago, actually, two years ago, when I started talking about autonomous systems, people reacted like, okay, you’re talking sci-fi and go away, we are not talking about Terminator stuff like that. By now, the, the issue has changed, people are responsive, we have a debate about lethal autonomy, so that’s a valuable first step to accept that we have a problem. So first, I think that’s a success. Second, we have the debate at the CCW, and so I don’t think that we will end up with an international treaty, but we might come up with a strong international norm, saying we don’t want lethal autonomy. So if you cannot have a treaty, you might aim for a norm, that’s one thing you could do. And as we have this debate, I’m quite confident that we will come up with a norm. The problematic part will be to define all this stuff, to go into the details, what’s meaningful human control, et cetera. But as we debated in the Cyberwar session, starting about definitions, agreeing on definitions, disagreeing, mingling around is part of the process of getting closer to agreement and norms. So I’m, I’m, I hope that we will end here, and as I said, we get mixed signals from European countries. On the one hand, they want more capable drones, or Western countries, US, they want more capable drones, and on the other hand, they don’t want full autonomy. And I think they still have to grapple with this contradiction. I once talked to someone from an air force, and he said, well, the new systems, they will do twenty-five Gs, and what they can do, they will outmaneuver any jet fighter. And then I asked, yeah, but now they are behind the jet fighter. Who is going to give the actual signal to shoot? If you relay it via satellite, the If you relay it via satellite, the opponent will be gone once you send the signal. And they said, well, yeah, we haven't figured that one out yet. So once you debate it, you can point to contradictions, et cetera. So I'm quite optimistic here. As I said, definitions are part of the process. And as you say, when we talk about the INF, there are, yeah, different opinions, not just between Russia and US, but within the United States as well, from what I hear. I mean, we have similar debates at the moment regarding the CFE treaty, whether drones are included in the CFE treaty, which according to my interpretation, they are, others disagree here. I've always seen, and that's a personal note, I'm not an international lawyer, I've always seen UAVs to be an unmanned aircraft. So it always struck me odd to see them as cruise missiles. However, as we just learned, there are missiles capable of evading measures, et cetera. So if I if I if I look at the next generation of drones capable of maneuvering in contested airspace, able to do evasive maneuvers, et cetera, I think we have to re-debate this issue, whether cruise missiles and this new category of jet-powered, high-capable drones might actually be closer together than what we have at the moment. Because I think those slow Predator drones, to compare them to cruise missiles, to me, it's, yeah, as I said, rather odd. But let's debate it, given the next generation.
Niklas, can I add something?
Yeah.
With your permission?
Yeah, of course.
General Atomics, which is the leading manufacturer of unmanned aircraft, Predator, Reaper, and all those things that we take in the action movies as granted nowadays, was the one to have introduced the name UAV, Unmanned Airy Vehicle. Then, after the political troubles they have started experiencing the last three, four, five years, the misperception this has created, they were also the ones to have started a different acronym. They call it remotely piloted aircraft, the last two years or three years now. They change it, because unmanned has a kind of a different connotation than remotely piloted, meaning someone is in the loop. It's not a cruise missile. That's just a note.
Yeah, it's the same with the German Luftwaffe and German air force. They insist to call them remotely piloted. Yeah, and it's kind of a different approach. It's I feel it's more like an airplane.
Words matter. We got time for one round of questions. We start over here. Let's wait for the mic.
My name is Farzad Sabet. I am assistant at the Graduate Institute of International Cities in Geneva, Switzerland. Thank you for your very enlightening presentations. I personally learned a lot. I just want to address the question regarding the Iranian ballistic missile program. Basically, from how I see it, and I'd like to know if you disagree, Iran's missile program is motivated in part out of a kind of a conventional military weakness. It's said that, on paper at least, the UAE's air force could eviscerate the Iranian air force in a number of days. So and also intended in part to be as a deterrent. Iran doesn't really have that much capability to project power very far beyond its borders, except through the missile program and its proxies. So given that this may be, in fact, a source of the program, how useful are these different kind of legal instruments that we're talking about in managing Iran, managing kind of the concern over Iran's ballistic missile program, without necessarily addressing the very large arms buildup that we have throughout the Persian Gulf and Israel, which are the two kind of main areas that Iran is concerned with when it comes to when it comes to this ballistic missile program, so.
Thank you very much. We move in here.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to thank all three speakers for enlightening presentations. My name is Mr. Daniel, and I work for the Ministry of Foreign Affairs from Slovenia, and I'm country, I would say, like Jeremy would say, BM free zone. No, I'd like to first two comments and a question concerning the the I would like to join my colleague Jeremy to for in defending HCOG. HCOG, I believe, the fifty percent is the number of fifty percent of reporting of national reports, the national declaration is in line with others, international mechanism in other conventional and even WMD instruments. I would like to say that I think that UN ROKA, this UN Register of Continental Arms, reaches maximum eighty eighty countries, which is less than forty percent. So maybe that would be the kind, but I would agree that we have to tend to do more. Secondly, to the to the to Mr. Schering, concerning the CCW, CCW is not a very productive forum these days. And I spent forty years in Geneva, and I remember sitting for many days, and this year we will they we will discuss only a mandate, what we're going to talk. But nonetheless, I would like to say that the issue of definitions is very important, but and some countries have different perceptions than others. And that reminds me of the of the Cluster Mission Conventions, when we have we had one or even two EU member states that denied existence of this. They were talking of submunitions and not not cluster mission. On the conceptual level, and maybe this would be also the case, the evolution will bring us probably forward. And the third issue would be, we discussed on the theoretical level the INF treaty, and I think that EU mentioned in some statements that it would be useful to explore possibility to multilateralize the INF treaty. But on the expert level, we never did any further exploration, further, I would say, technical debate on that, at least when I was there. So I would, if any of you would have would have any idea how this would go forward, that could be kind of one of outcome of this of this of this conference. But in general, I agree, I have to agree that arms control machinery is lagging behind, and we should do more here. And now, probably, it's not only the issue of of knowledge, but also of the political will, but I believe that many people from us will be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there is one further question or comment, Mustafa?
I was not planning to ask a question, but my colleague from this side just made a comment and prompted this question in my mind. My question is directly to my fellow countrymen, Sutki, something that relates to his doctoral dissertation on air power. And I was in his committee, it was an excellent piece. Having listened to everything that, you know, all three experts have just mentioned here, and knowing the subject, the background for so many years, and how actually wise or logical to rely on air power, at least knowing something, of course, from sources that I cannot mention here, that just it would be a war between Turkey and Greece would last only a day and a half, at most, because both parties would probably be short of ammunition, weapons, and everything. And so, after all, war, yeah, yeah, a few missiles, whatever, whatever you. So after all, after having discussed everything that we just discussed here and elsewhere in papers, books, it is not the air power which, you know, gives it a decisive victory. We definitely acknowledge its significance, missile power, everything that we know. But then, why would countries so heavily rely on air power, and why not in, you know, especially land power? Thank you.
Thank you. There is a two finger from Pavel.
Thank you. Sorry for interning again. Just it's a question of clarification about this exchange about HCOG and the pre-launch notifications, because I'm a little bit lost here, why US and Russia are the only two countries that submit those notifications? And and following up on that, you mentioned very well that there is a need for kind of regional mechanisms of that kind. And as I understand, there is there is an agreement of this kind, which is between India and Pakistan about launch notifications, and there is one between Russia and China, in fact. Yeah, there is, I'll show you the text. So so there is a structure there, so I need, I think it's just something we need to keep in mind.
All right, a number of questions. I would actually ask the speaker to answer in reverse order, which puts Niklas on the crossfire as the first one.
Thank you very much. Yeah, regarding the CCW, sometimes I've I'm unsure whether it's the best forum to debate lethal autonomy or drones, because with the specific focus on humanitarian arms control, we are missing the security aspect. And there is, of course, a security aspect. I've talked to some computer and robot guys who told me, well, if you have a very high complex computer system interacting with unknown another system with unknown code, the result of the interaction is unpredictable. So in addition to problems regarding humanitarian issues, I can imagine two very sophisticated opponents with lethal autonomous drones engaging each other, and there might be a war just by chance, because the system does not react in the correct way, and it's acting too fast for people to intervene. So we are missing a security dimension here, definitely. However, as I said before, I'm glad that we have a forum where we debated at the moment, which was quite unlikely two years ago. And so, you know, you take what you get.
Thank you, Sutki. I wouldn't want you to predict the results of the Turkish-Greece conflict. It's more like air power versus ballistic missiles.
Anybody who wants that, it is my dissertation ten years ago, it's in English, it could be read. I think it's in the libraries, but anyhow, it's passe already, anyway. Yeah, it could be. Okay, to start with the question on Iran ballistic missile program and their relative weakness in conventional capabilities and this, this is actually the kind of what I would call the usual suspects discussion that we have been in the last twenty-five years anyway. I mean, the strategic equalizer impact of ballistic missiles and countries like Iraq, Iran, Libya, Syria, their preference for ballistic missiles has was explained by this the strategic equalizer function or benefit of ballistic missiles. So there is no question about it. So and it still applies to a number of countries. North Korea is the same, even Pakistan, to a certain extent, to guarantee delivery of its nuclear weapons against India, which is superior in terms of air power. So this is, I mean, doubtless, this is a factor that should be considered, and it's being considered. That's why I think it will be unrealistic to try to press countries to get rid of all their ballistic missile capabilities at once. There are quite a few countries in the world that will not accept that. What I was trying to point out is, you have countries like Korea or Turkey with advanced technology, air power, I mean, part of Western alliance structures, and why in the hell they are developing this capability? This was the main point I was trying to make. But otherwise, what you say is still valid and on the table. Now, coming back to the INF treaty debate, and of course, this is something which probably deserves a session, because there are diverging things, but it's not black and white. Even when you look at RS-26, even if you consider the US position that it's not a light ICBM, it's actually a direct nut replacement, a successor of SS-20, the famous weapon of the nineteen eighties, which gave rise to INF in the first place, and the tomahawks on the US side and all that. Well, I mean, if you try to see it from the Russian perspective, they say we have a rapidly developing Chinese nuclear capability, which is over land, and we don't need ICBMs, we need something short of that. I mean, it's a lighter ICBM, which is not applicable only to Europe or US, it's also relevant for the Chinese context. By trying to restrict us in Europe, you are also causing an imbalance on the eastern end of the Eurasian mass, okay? And the same thing for cruise missile, the R-500, which is a more unambiguous violation, in my opinion, but still, cruise missiles do exist in European and US inventories. The air-launched and sea-launched versions are okay, the land-launched versions are controlled by INF or eliminated, actually. So in the Russian geographical context, they don't have this flexibility to put out on the ships, or they cannot trust on their aircraft, perhaps, against a superior Western air power. So they may as well think, what's wrong by putting the same thing on a truck as compared to a bomber or a cruiser or a submarine, which US and Western navies have been or air forces have been doing for decades now. And coming back to the last question about air power versus ballistic missiles.
Shortly, please.
Okay, very short. Well, air power is more flexible. It's not only for that kind of deterrence, it has applications for naval warfare, for assisting the air, the ground warfare and all that. So it brings you a lot more flexibility than a ballistic missile, which is a very tactically and strategically inflexible solution. I think that's the answer.
Okay, thank you. Let me just pick up on the air power thing here, because that's 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 an interesting dimension. I think you're seeing an interesting trend for a couple of reasons. One, the number of countries actually now manufacturing fighter aircraft is actually going down. You know, some have argued that the F-35 will be the last manned aircraft, so you're probably going to go down the drone direction, right? So if you're a country which is looking to develop an air power, your options are actually more and more limited and more restricted, because, you know, most of them are now, for example, the Eurofighter, there are very few countries which are doing, you know, aircraft. You can literally count them on one hand, Russia, the United States, France, you know, almost no other country. Well, you've got, yeah, you've got the, you know, you've got the Swedes, and you've got a couple of others, but, you know, really, they're not they're not significant number of a number of players there. Second, in the particular case of Iran, you know, this is an interesting question. You want to stop them, stop their ballistic missile program? Start selling them fighter aircraft. This is the this is, if you're Iran, you know, there's a very interesting correlation between when the ballistic missile program began and when they stopped buying or getting access to fighter aircraft. It's a direct correlation, you know, they have no option. And you're right, in the case of, you know, South Korea, they do have options, and yet they're going for ballistic missiles, maybe to hedge their bets, you know. But in the case of Iran, I think it's it, and now I think it's becoming an attractive proposition, because you become, the more indigenous the capability is, the less you're dependent on others, you're going to go on with that program, right? I haven't read your thesis on Turkey and Iran, but I think there's one acronym which will explain why Turkey and Iran's conflict will not last for more than any kind of conflict. Oh, sorry, Greece, Iran, not Greece. One acronym, NATO. It's not possible for two NATO countries to go to war with each other. Hopefully, that'll be a test. Okay, just just to end up on HCOG, and I think I'm really grateful for the for the comments made. And look, you know, I actually think with all the criticism that we give and others have given on HCOG, it is certainly worth, you know, building upon. What are the ways that it can build upon? Let me let me suggest two or three, right? One is, if there are countries, there are, by the way, now a hundred and thirty-seven countries which are members of HCOG, right? These are also a hundred and thirty-seven countries which could provide same reporting to the UN Arms Register. Why don't they do that? Can HCOG encourage that kind of reporting? Should the HCOG reporting be at opposition to the reporting as part of the UN's Register of Arms? It shouldn't. In fact, that's why you would actually see HCOG directly contributing to greater reporting in the UN Arms Register. So that would be a tremendous kind of value added. Second, you know, there's clearly, you know, there's something to be said more and more, you know, about universality, and there's a, this has become a mantra. And to some extent, it's true, but let's also keep in mind that, you know, the absence of some key countries is perhaps more telling than going universal. So in some ways, I think perhaps targeting and trying to get more countries into HCOG, even though it may not be universal, is going to be more critical. And I think that's an important element to work towards as well. And this comes to Pavel's point about, you know, the various bilateral arrangements which already exist, and how those could perhaps be incorporated as part of HCOG, not formally, but informally. And, you know, maybe if these are countries reporting, even if they're not members of HCOG, you know, included in some ways in that reporting might be a useful
of HCOCK, you know, included in some ways in that reporting might be a useful way to go forward. Let me stop there, there's more, but I know, you know, in the interest of time, I definitely would want to stop there.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, it's been a long day, it's been a long panel, it's difficult to summarize it, but I'll try. There's been quite a lot for the technology enthusiast, quite a lot for the arms controllers and strategies and for all of us who try to combine these different roles. So a couple of points. Understand the drivers, don't seek universal solutions fast. Start with regional solutions, start with confidence-building measures, engage on UAVs before they engage on you in an autonomic mode. So I would like to thank everybody taking part in this discussion. And please join me in thanking our three panelists for this excellent session. Thank you very much.